Okay, we can continue right on and we'll go with Mr. Schumaker had another comment or question.
Well, just a comment, first a comment. Two out of seven classes, the reason we have two out of seven classes is partly because you had redistricting and we ended up adding an additional kindergarten class. So, the teachers at FER should not be feeling threatened by this particular...
Correct. Yeah, it's a great point.
That someone's gonna be moved out because of this.
Correct, yeah.
The second, the other next point that I want to make is that it equates to approximately 28 to 29 percent of the students that could volunteer for this program. As a result, we could have quite a nice blend. Having worked at Hispanic Learning Center, I know that a lot of these Spanish students that we had there were very intelligent, but their Spanish got in the way and their integration was really tough in the beginning. This would give them that opportunity to really show who they are and what they are and you well know that the other students that have lived here all their lives would benefit from that interaction and I would see the confidence that would be building on both sides because there would be a huge exchange through that interaction.
Absolutely.
Also, my daughter served as a type of VIF in Spain for three years doing the same type of program in Spain and so that has been very beneficial to watch her grow through that and then come back here and develop completely different lesson plans and different ways of relating to the children here and how to teach them Spanish at Woodlawn, which was a private school, but she did, that was, that's her passion. The final point that I want to make is whatever we do, we want to make sure that we keep our children focused on this and the testing that you get out of this, I think if, it needs to be marketed out there to our community as we go forward. So, we really need to show some really good results as we go through this and Mr. Roberts, you know, I really encourage you if we do consent to do this, that we really try to keep this out in front of the public so that, so that the misconceptions that are out there, because a lot of people are equating this to an immigration issue and it's really not related to that. It's really related to communication and it really enhances their ability to communicate.
Right.
And they'll learn the English language much better and have a much better understanding of it by learning to communicate in both. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. I just wanted to say, Jason, I know you worked hard on this for probably months and a lot of effort has gone into it, but before we find out where the board's at, Mr. Roberts, you want to come up maybe just for a minute or two and let the board know about the buy-in out at FER and, you know, your thoughts and your excitement or whatever, you know, about this particular program that we're gonna be deciding on here?
Sure. Absolutely. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address Ms. Carpenter's concern about the reading scores and the fact that 65 percent of our students were at grade level last year according to the EOGs. As Mr. Van Uclen mentioned, it's precisely that reason that I'm excited about this, one of the reasons anyway. The program will give us an opportunity to serve that group of students that did not pass and we see this as, based on all the data from other schools that have used the Splash program, as the best vehicle for us to get them to where they need to be. So, we're very excited about that opportunity, as well as, as he mentioned, the opportunity to challenge all students to grow and perform. I had the opportunity to present the idea of Splash to our PTO board at last month's meeting, was met with a great deal of enthusiasm and excitement, as well as a little bit of regret and the regret was, all their children are already in school and they wouldn't have the opportunity to be a part of this program. In fact, one of the members of the PTO board said, "If I thought this was a real possibility, I'd held my child out one more year." He's in kindergarten right now and she wished that he could be a part of the program next year. So, there's a lot of excitement from that group, as well as from other parents I've had a chance to speak to. A lot of excitement in the staff too, a little bit of concern. Mr. Schumaker, I believe you brought up the fact that none of our staff would be threatened by the implementation of this program next year and that's where the greatest concern comes from. No one wants to move to another school or lose their position within the grade level to take this opportunity on and we would not do that next school year based on what we're anticipating with the new students coming over from Cox Mill and certainly want to put this out front in the public eye so this can be a selling point for FER and for the, for the entire school system. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Ms. Carpenter?
Can I ask you a question? Because to me, why, you know, you've had ESL teachers there. This is what they were, you know, what supposed to be, they're supposed to be doing, actually helping these students. What's happened? Where is the break been? Why has this not worked? Because that's where it's supposed to actually, where the rubber hits the road.
Yeah, and it has worked for some students, but not for all. We have a wonderful ESL staff and they do a tremendous job. I think if you look at the research from across the state and across the country, you find out that our numbers aren't that much different from numbers from other schools with this population. The gap exists across the country and the research on the Splash program shows that it's the best means to close that achievement gap between the ESL community and our non-ESL community and our data looks pretty similar to data from other schools for that ESL population using the pull-out program. It helps to close the gap somewhat, but not completely.
But looking at the numbers, what really, 2008, 2009 was, was really good. Then it, and it went down a little bit, then it went back up and what really gets me, the data's kind of, it's kind of odd and then it took another nosedive, but why that was, I mean, that's what's really odd about it. And then the population actually went up, then it went back down again, your Hispanic population, because now it's, it's back down again. You're, it's not as much as it was last year. So, your population of Hispanics is down from what it was last year. So, you don't have as big a Spanish pocket, population as what you had in the 2010, 2011 because you only got 19.7 percent now.
And maybe I should clarify, that's their percent proficiency on...
Oh, oh, okay, so their population is more.
Correct.
Okay, so, well, I'm sorry, I was looking at, because it was saying 25 percent, so, so they've gotten better then?
Well, they, their reading proficiency has gone, has fluctuated, but it's never been higher than 20, you know, in the last four years, 27 percent, which is still, you know, unacceptable, right? But their, their population as far as student body, correct if I'm wrong, is about 25 percent and has been pretty, I don't know if that's steady or...
Right. It fluctuates for grade level ranges between about 22 and 37.
Well, I'm right around the corner from you, so, I'm only a couple of blocks from you, so I'm in your neighborhood. So, when they said, "Ah, the neighborhood's real," you know, I'm there, so I've lived there 35 years, so I know your, I know the neighborhood very well.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Everybody, is everybody all finished up now? Okay, Jason, once again, thank you and Mr. Roberts, thank you for being here and your comments. So, I want to find out the pleasure of the board consent agenda, is everybody okay for consent?
No, I want to put on vote.
Okay, you want to vote, okay. We'll put it on the action agenda then for Monday.
Okay.
Thank you much. All right, board members, we're gonna move on to our budget amendments and we'll have Ms. Klutz to the podium.
All right, good evening. We'll start with our state budget amendment where we had our mid-year transportation and that's an expected budget allocation and that was an increase and so what happens is we'll get our budget allotment at the beginning of the year and then mid-year they'll adjust our, our allotment for the remaining amount, so they don't allocate all of it at the state until they know what they're dealing with at the, in, in the middle of the year. So, we were expecting most of that, there was a little bit more than what we were expecting, which was a good thing, so. I'm sorry. Say that again.
It's paid in two parts? It's, that's...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, didn't understand your question. Yes, that is, that's all we'll get unless there's a minor fuel adjustment, if fuel were to increase or we were to ask for a specific piece of equipment or make a special adjustment or something like that, but there'll be minor adjustments, but the mid-year adjustment comes one time. Yeah, sorry. Okay. And the next one is our local fund and what happened here is this is a decrease and Conaplis has asked, we generally take care of Conaplis facilities and grounds, but they have asked the commissioners to be able to take care of their own mowing for their, their facility and so we were able to accommodate that and the commissioners were able to accommodate. So, they'll take that, they'll pay that money directly to Conaplis and so that was just a pass-through anyway, it doesn't matter to us. Okay? The federal fund, based, we're primarily dealing with some increases here, some adjustments to our federal funds. Again, we have planning allotments and then as we get into the year, they'll adjust those and so then the last one, the Title I, is simply just a reclass. We were allowed in all of our federal funds, you have a projected amount that you can do, you can charge indirect cost and then through the year, the federal said we could, we could charge more indirect costs, so we, we were able to adjust that. So, overall, there was an increase into our federal funds. The next one is our capital outlay and essentially what, what's happening here is we have state replacement buses, the, once you buy the first bus, the, the state will replace them for us in a cycle and when funds got tight, the state had to start leasing them and so what happens is that they lease them, they take care of paying for them, but we just have to record it on our books, so it's simply a journal entry.
This looks like two buses.
Um, I'm sure that it is probably multiple buses.
Hundred and sixteen.
It, we, it's an installment payment for three years, so it's just a third of, of the payment, okay, for multiple buses.
Proceed to the required settlement.
We will. Mm-hmm. And then the last one's our local special fund and so this is where we record our grants primarily and you're seeing a, an arts grant for J.M. Freeze from BP and you're seeing a grant for A.T. Allen, the weather bug, I think we had a presentation on that grant and we, we're also seeing irrigation grant from, from Cabarrus County for Shady Brook elementary that comes through our funds, so, because we deal with facility and grounds for, for the, for that school. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Are there any other further questions from the board? Everybody okay for the consent agenda on the 11th?
Just a very quick question. How do we ever recognize entities that provide grants to us? What, I know that's not a budgetary question, but how do we recognize or acknowledge to BP Oil, for example, Ridditch Petroleum? How do we communicate to them our gratitude for their generosity?
Go ahead, come on.
Yeah, I'm sorry to cross from one cabinet member to another here.
Whenever we receive any kind of grant funding from a company or a foundation, we always follow that up with a thank you letter from the superintendent's office thanking them for their support of Cabarrus County Schools. Dr. Shepherd also always makes a point to mention it in his comments during these board meetings, during the business meetings as well, so that the general public would have access to that information and then we also try to publicize it via our website as well.
As well as the annual report a lot of times.
And then also in the annual report, correct.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spoon, for those comments. Okay, board members, are we okay for the consent agenda for the 11th? Everybody good? May I see a head shake or something? Okay, Ms. Klutz, consent agenda on the 11th. All right, we'll move on to 4.4, we'll have Ms. Donna Smith on the memorandum of understanding between Cabarrus County Schools and Cabarrus County regarding the joint use of facilities. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
It's a long title. I want to become a historian at the very beginning of this because I think you need some history on this document and I frankly need to take you back 40 years. I have not been in this district for 40 years, I'm proud to say, but at the same time, that's the last time this agreement, or the only agreement that we have on file signed by all entities occurred, so it's in 1973. Now, there've been attempts since that time and a lot of this I've learned has been through history and working with Londa Strong, who's actually the department lead for Active Living in Parks. There was an attempt to bring all the municipalities together to work out a joint use agreement and when I say municipalities, there would include Concord City, Cabarrus County, Harrisburg, Mount Pleasant, Midland, and I may have left...
Hartsel.
Ooh, Hartsel, I left out Hartsel. And the issue, it may be amusing, but there could not be agreement at that time and nothing against attorneys, but the problem was each municipality brought their attorneys together and while the municipalities could agree that that may sound good, it's just the wording differences that appeared from municipality to municipality based on the advisement received. So, what happened, efforts in the 90s to make a change were abandoned, which brought us into last school year, when we had the opportunity of working, we had some problems we needed to clear up and a lot of that was involving the use of our facilities for athletic reasons. And so, at the time, our board, we, we did a lot of work and what we agreed to agree on was we just needed to parcel out at that part, the agreement that we could make agreement on, which was actually the gym supervisor role, because we needed that relationship defined before we moved into the season this year. And yet, at the same time, there were some fruitful conversations going on because we had a great meeting between the county and, and us and I'd like to say us because I'm just a representative of Cabarrus County in this, I'd like to recognize Lynn Wiki, Kelly Klutz, Gary Calamery, Dr. Shepherd, and also at the time Sarah Stone, the attorney who worked with us, as we met with Mike Downs, the county manager, and Londa Strong, as well as their board attorney. And during that time, while we agreed we needed to define the gym supervisor role, we began to say, "Okay, we have two county entities here that need one another. How can we better define how we share one another?" And so, all of a sudden, the focus became so much larger and I think Sarah and her advisement helped us so much to say, "Let's deal with gym supervisor, let's come back and look at this later." So, the later brings us up into January because we did approve the gym supervisor role last October, November, in that timeframe. So, we began working again and we sat a meeting and tried to figure out, now where do we go from here? Because it's interesting how difficult it is to define joint use. We see it from our vantage point and so the document you have in front of you has a history. This is modeled a lot after the agreement that's in place in Seattle, Washington, between the Parks Department and the county there, as well as the school district. And so, this has been drafted, we have sat together with Londa Strong, who's actually the department chair of the Active Living in Parks Department, I think the memorandum of understanding has also been shared, like you'll have to correct me here, with the Parks Commission, just to show the wording, just trying to get folks to react, because after 40 years, it takes a while to, to make sure we've got all of our wording just right. So, what you have before you tonight is an agreement that we have at this point, I have to admit, we do not have at this point the county's take on the document. When we were looking at this initially, it was believed that we would present this to our Board of Education the same month that it would go to the Board of Commissioners, but this document will not be reviewed probably until next month by the Board of Commissioners and so what I wanted to present tonight was this document to you and talk a little bit about what it is and the purposes and then invite your questions and I thank Mr. Phillips for already helping me, actually, I think there were three grammatical directions that we can point out that make the document even clearer. But to kind of summarize where we are, I'd like to ask about two questions. One is, what is this? And the intent of this agreement is to show the pooling of resources to meet continuous youth and community demands for developing or developmental and recreational opportunities. That's the whole purpose of this document. Now, the purpose then, it will encourage that we will jointly use our facilities and so we're not talking just Cabarrus County school facilities, we're talking about Cabarrus County facilities from the Parks Department and any facility that they have. It establishes procedures for us to develop cooperative working relationships between our school district and the community at large, or the county, I should say, and by nature of memorandum of understanding, it does encourage that we work together jointly and cooperatively and that would include facility maintenance and development. However, it becomes difficult and that's where we have to look at equitably distributing the time and cost of facilities and ground usage as we move this direction. It's just not simply say, "Let's share." There's a lot of things to figure out, but much of this will have to be figured out as we move forward, because the date we would like to move for this to become effective is actually July 1 and by becoming effective July 1, then that gives us time to work on some other details that we need to work on prior to that time. So, at this time, I would just invite the board with questions that they may have about the document that we have and I know between Kelly, Lynn, and me, we will do our best answer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. I know this has been a work, a work in progress here for some time, quite some time and maybe most of the bugs are worked out, I don't know, but we'll start on Mr. Phillips' side and if you have comments, questions, concerns, we'll go ahead and hear those and come on down the board.
No, I, I think it's a great thing and, you know, our county has some, some wonderful park and rec facilities and it'll be good to be able to coordinate the use and I know that there's concerns at the county commissioners' level that we may not be letting the public use our school facilities as often as we should and hopefully this will help address that concern as well.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
And to prove what a nerd I am, decision-making might need a hyphen all the way through the document. Decision-making is not one word. Again, quite the nerd, I apologize for that. But is the primary purpose of this document, the relationship between one governmental unit and another governmental unit and the shared use of their facilities? My question is, if we are agreeing with the counties or this, or the municipalities in, in how to use facilities, I understand that that's the purpose of this document, but how are we, or does the document address private groups, churches, youth leagues that, that are not directly sponsored by some, again, governmental unit or peer governmental unit and are we in alignment with our private users as well? I, I'm not quite sure how to ask the question, I've been trying to go through the document, but I'm trying to get a sense of county to school system or city, town to school system. I understand that that's the primary purpose, but does this address churches and youth leagues also using the, again, our school facilities?
It does and I'll begin to answer, but I welcome you to join me too as I make this answer. What the document tries to do first is to establish that we become first priority use for the county and they become first priority use for us, but we instill in that by looking at our obligations, by July 1, having each school have their calendar set and part of this conversation continues to go back also to the county with their calendar set, so that when they come forward or a third party, which is a third party outside the joint use agreement here, and Kelly could probably explain more about third party, that's after we give priority use here. For example, if the Harrisburg Youth League, we want to say, wants to use our facilities, they would be given priority over, I cannot think of a private group right now, a church, Harrisburg Presbyterian Church. By virtue, did I do well? Okay, by virtue of this agreement, what that would mean is the county piece would have first priority. The other church could have use and that's where the scheduling gets into the document here.
Okay.
If I could interject, and David, that's really the way it has been, that structure has been there since 1973. It's, this is a little more formal cleaning up some of that and who's actually in charge of the scheduling and this, that and the other, so that, that piece is really no, no different than what we've been doing in the past and those groups do have access, you know, it's just the prioritized, the prioritization that we're making, I guess, a little more formal.
I guess the phrase I was struggling for was the third parties, which would not have a voice directly, such as churches or other groups, that might rent facilities over a weekend, but I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Walter.
I could see a lot of time and thought when conversations went into this and really, is there like an addendum that shows all facilities that are covered under it or will there be?
Originally, there was. At this point, Sarah has advised us in the definition at the very beginning of the document, whereas making it all-inclusive in the document, so that as the county adds new facilities, we would not have to continue to add schools or county facilities to that, because originally, when we were looking at this last fall, there was a whole list attached and that became a big part of discussion in terms of what constitutes a county park, what constitutes a Board of Education facility and so that in itself was creating such, while everybody understands it in practicality, I think, it was creating dissension on a document and I say dissension being, as we add another one, would we have to add that school there? So, she proposed that we add that and we're a statement to uncover all facilities that are currently under the Board of Education, as well as the county. So, by not having a listing, that's where she proposed.
I think it's, I mean, it's a public document, if I was a member of the public wanting to know what, what facilities are covered by that, there should be something that would refer to what they are, but anyway, that's, that's one of my comments. The other comment is you have section 16 here that, that's not completed, you've got everything else completed, but you don't know where you're sending or who, how that's worked out.
That has worked out and Mark will have to advise there at the time of the agreement, is it not?
Yeah, we just weren't, we can certainly fill it out for us, we weren't sure who they wanted the notice, the county. I think that the board will probably come to the superintendent, but we'll, we'll fill that, we'll fill that out for...
I mean, in the state of the electronic age that we're in, we still have a lot of old languages in the notification section, but that's, that's all my own comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Okay, Mr. Kiger, as you know, he's our liaison for the Parks and Rec, which is formerly, I mean, formerly Parks and Rec, it's now the Active Living in Parks Department, so, Mr. Kiger, if you want to give us your questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think Donna did an excellent job of providing the history. It has, it's been a topic of discussion at, at our meetings, that, that commission board ever since I got there, so, which has been two years and I think we finally are, are there, there, I'll, there is some concern about what, is something going to change? You know, what is this really doing, whatever, and again, I think we're just, we're just formalizing something that's been in place for a long time, so, anyway, well, it was in writing, it just, you know, from 1973 till now, there's been a lot that has changed, including things as minor as Harrisburg used to be a youth association, well, it's now a, a local municipality Parks and Rec Department, so the old document didn't have it that way and it's just, you know, it's just, just cleaning up the document, so I think we're, I'm, I'm okay with this. I do have a question for Mark. I suppose, I'm, I'm not going to be naive enough to think that when the county sends it back, there's, it's going to be just like we sent it over to them, so, I mean, at that point in time, we'll, we'll sort of revisit to, to see what they've proposed or done?
I think, I think that's right. I mean, if you approve it in this form and they change it, then we'd have to come back to you again to consider whatever modifications they make, so that's just the, the part of the back and forth, so, but I think if we approve it, we've given them a framework of what would be acceptable to us and maybe discourage further changes, but you're right, we may get, we may get some more.
Thank you, Mark, and also Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter, do you have comments, questions?
Has no. I think it looks good.
All right, all right, that's good. All right, Mr. Schumaker, do you have any comments, questions?
Other than, y'all, y'all have done a really good job and appreciate all the work that's gone into this, because I know hashing through semantics and wordsmithing is painful, so, thank you so much.
And, Mr. Chair, I apologize, that just occurred to me to ask a final question. In the sections discussing reimbursement procedures and disagreements, was there any consideration of arbitration if a group comes into our facilities and is responsible for some kind of damage? Surely, we wouldn't take each other to court over it or something, but there was some, a lot of work here in reimbursements and disagreements, but how, I guess what I'm saying is, would it be appropriate for a section or a, I guess what I'm asking is, arbitration surely would be part of the considerations instead of a long-drawn-out dispute about who's responsible for damages. Can you help me at all understand that?
I probably should refer to Mark for this one.
That wasn't well articulated, I apologize, but...
Yeah, we do sometimes use arbitration provisions or arbitration options. I think you're right, the current dispute resolution provision really talks about bringing it up to the higher levels, in other words, this board talking to that board would be the, under the current draft, remember, it's, this is just with the county, so, if, if it's an individual user, a private group, that would be addressed under our facility use provision, but wouldn't be a dispute, but if we have a dispute with the county over whether it's a county property or school property, whether someone's giving priority use, what the, what this agreement would say is that you're gonna have the, ultimately, if you have to, the two boards would talk about that. about that issue. We don't have, what we could add, we don't have here is, is an arbitration provision and you could do that if you wanted to. I mean, typically, between governmental entities, ultimately, like if you had a budget dispute or something, there's a court procedure for that as opposed to selection of an arbitrator. I, I, I think our thought, Sarah did more work on this than I did, I think, we think it's unlikely you're going to end up in any kind of litigation over this provision. So I agree, that's not likely, but we did not negotiate some separate arbitration provision either.
And I would like to thank Sarah Stone. She sat with us through many meetings, just trying to understand our direction as well as the county's direction. And she was the one selected, I guess you would say, for the big task of pulling all of our ideas together. And until we hear from the county, I just would like at this point to really give a lot of attention to her because she's helped us do something we haven't been able to do for many, many years and she worked tirelessly on this.
Do our board members know who Sarah is? Have they? Okay.
Yeah, I think she's been here, at least for the reception she was here, but I'm not sure she said it on the meeting yet.
We just appreciate that help, we really do.
Absolutely. Well, board members, where are we at on this? Are we okay for the consent agenda on the 11th? Everybody on consent? Okay.
Thank you.
Consent agenda on the 11th. Okay, board members, we're going to move on forward to the next item here is the academic calendar and we've got Dr. Sane coming to the podium and she's going to talk to us about the need for this change here.
We were really blessed last year. We didn't have any inclement weather at all, so I guess it's payback time, I'm not sure. But good evening. What we need to do is we need to designate a day to, actually, a student day to make up for January the 18th. If you look on the calendar before you, one of the, the next days that are grayed out, which were days that were designated to make up days are spring break, which is not a popular idea, especially if there's only one day, May 27th, which is Memorial Day, and that is becoming an increasingly popular holiday in our particular state, June 1st, public's not real crazy about Saturday school, and June the 10th. June the 10th is a really bad idea for high schools and that those teachers are making sure that all the graduation statistics are finished and ready to go. And so as we looked at this, Dr. Shepherd and I looked at this, there, there really is no good make up day designated as a make up day. So the question is, what could we do? February the 18th was designated as a teacher work day. It was capped for high school. Elementary and middle did their Common Core planning on January 22nd, but high school has yet to do theirs because they were finishing up with exams and getting ready for the next semester. So what we would like to propose as a better solution is we would like to propose that February the 18th become a regular school day for students and staff. We would like to propose that February 23rd become a teacher work day. And we have capped it, but we would also like to propose that you allow us the flexibility to work with folks since this is a new proposal that they were not told to plan for. And they may have other plans to work with them so that they receive the benefit of what would have been opportunity to work together in their content area alike on Common Core as well as be able to have a little flexibility on a make up day. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Sane. I think we, at first thought that maybe we weren't going to have to make that day up.
I was hoping.
But it just, the way that it turned out and the way the general statute reads, I think that we're going to have to do it. And so based on what I see, this is probably the best solution, but we'll start to my right, Mr. Schumaker, if you want to make your comments or questions in reference to this proposal. And if no comments, we'll move right on to Ms. Carpenter.
When you, do you have like a little committee that works with you on this or is this, because this is just a, a change to an already existing calendar, this really doesn't involve a lot of folks involved with this?
This really doesn't involve a lot of folks involved. What I did find out, for example, I do know that they're holding a wrestling tournament on that weekend, but since it's just a teacher day and teachers, high school teachers may or may not be meeting in that building, we can isolate that part of it. I think the, the key is going to be flexibility, folks who already have tickets, folks who already have non-refundable plans. The key is going to be flexibility with that and to make sure that we're kind and patient and we know we're springing this on people.
So if, if, if teachers decided on the 23rd that they didn't want to participate, then it was, it's what you call an optional work day, which they would use?
Middle, middle school and elementary school would have it as, as a totally optional work day. We're working right now with CNI to see if we can figure out how they can participate or receive the benefits of the staff development that would happen on that day. But because we received a waiver from the state, we do have to have some mandated staff development days. Does that make sense?
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker and Ms. Carpenter.
But you're saying you are going to allow flexibility on that day? We would, we want to do, yes, yes. Let me say yes, because I think that's the right thing to do in this situation. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Kiger. Thank you. Mr. Walter?
The 25th, we don't have to make that day up because we didn't send people home early?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, I'm okay.
Okay, Mr. Harrison?
No questions.
Thank you.
So educate me, what, what does capped planning mean?
Last year, in our calendar, we were required by the state to have 185 school days and we signed a waiver, we applied for a waiver, that said that we didn't have to have five of those days. We could turn them into teacher work days if we would agree or share with them what our plans were, our plans for Common Core development, staff development. Capped means that at that point, we've designated it as, as a staff development day. And typically, when teachers and everybody knows plenty of time in advance, unless it's some kind of medical emergency, we expect you to be there. In this situation, we want to be a little more flexible because we didn't give them prior information about this until now. And so capped means we're retaining that day for a staff, for staff development and in this case, for high school.
Mr. Chairman, I think this might be a good agenda topic to get some feedback from our teacher liaison, to see what she and her colleagues think of the idea.
I think you're right, Mr. Phillips. Now is a good time. Mariko, whenever you get ready.
I can't honestly speak for everyone, obviously, but like personally, we, I am going out of town that Saturday for a soccer tournament, so I'm sure that's going to happen.
Right.
Across the board, but I think this is a good idea.
And it wouldn't be capped for middle or high school because you guys have already done your Common Core planning day.
Right, so, that's all.
That's the way I like them, short and sweet. Thank you, Mariko. Okay, Dr. Shepherd has a comment he wants to make.
I would say, I want to call it to your attention that there's not a good choice. This is the best choice, but I do believe as well as we're being flexible with our teachers on the 23rd. If you look at the bottom of the calendar, you'll see that this listed days to choose from. It says January 5th, January 26th, April 5th, so it skips over February. So when we brought this calendar to you and you revised it, former board, looks like in Ju, in July of '02, we were basically telling families at that point that that holiday, which is on Monday, the 18th, is a day that you could plan a long weekend. And so I think we're going to have to be understanding as best we can that there will equally be some students who will not be here on that day.
Exactly, and we'll send that message out for both students and staff that the flexibility would only be fair in, in this particular circumstance.
And I think the one, we're often caught in the fact that we reward students for perfect attendance. And there are always children who have, who have not missed a day of school and their parents, somewhere in 30,000 students, we're going to have this example, and their parents have reservations and they're flying back in on the 18th and they've never missed a day of school. And so we're going to have to bend over backwards to be as accommodating as we can because this is a day that we did not give our families more than two weeks' warning. But I do believe that it will accommodate the needs of more children.
Right.
And more families than we're taking a Saturday. And certainly, I don't think breaking into, or I shouldn't use that, but going into spring break to take a day would be something that would be well received. So the reason that we're in this bind is because we're, we're continuing to see a reduction in the number of teacher work days in our calendar. There just aren't enough days in the calendar to choose from. And our friends from the north that moved down and districts that don't have the same 180 days or 1,000 hours as we used to have a requirement, don't understand why we don't have days built into the calendar that we can just say, well, we're just not going to make this one up. Well, we don't have that flexi, flexibility right now. We do believe, and we thought we had it this year, but next year, our General Assembly has passed a law that is effective next year that says that we will go to school 185 days or, and that's, that's the key word, or 1,025 hours. We feel confident that we'll have 1,025 hours this year, but because the rule is effective next year, we feel like we will have a little bit of flexibility at that point. So we ask those folks that are used to more flexibility to be patient with us. I think it's coming our way. It's not easy. Dr. Sane and her group has done an excellent job and I hope this pleases as many parents and as many families and as many teachers as it possibly can. And we'll all hope and pray for no more bad weather days this year.
Absolutely. Now, if you knock on wood, we'll be okay.
Well, since we're in the February, unfortunately, we'll probably have some more bad weather because my wife's birthday is on the 11th and it always snows on the 11th. And that's next Monday, by the way.
Anytime after lunchtime.
Okay, all right. Board members, where are we at on this for the consent or the action agenda? Where are we at? Everybody's okay with consent agenda? Okay, Dr. Sane, consent agenda on the 11th. All right, thank you, board members. Something else? Dr. Carling, you've got, you've got this other one here on the policies.
I've got the next one too.
So if you want to go ahead on those.
I will. Um, I just want to go back and reiterate the, how we make decisions to make policy changes. One way that happens is the General Assembly gets very busy and they, they pass laws or they change laws and then those laws are interpreted by the North Carolina School Board Association and those interpretations of, of how those, of the policies that should implement, the laws that are passed, are shared with us. And, and that's one, one way that we get policy changes. The other way that we get policy changes is that we get into a situation or we are forward thinking enough that we realize that we need some governance over an activity or we find out that a policy perhaps is not strong enough or in the case of technology, perhaps our policy has not kept pace with the changes in time and the changes in technology. What I'm bringing before you today is our policy changes of the first order. These are changes in policy due to changes in law that were, the laws were created this summer and it takes a while to get all that interpreted. So all of these were recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association. The first policy that we're going to look at is 1310. And 1310 is parental involvement. And there was a major change in the Title I policy due to the fact that North Carolina received a waiver to participate in Race to the Top instead of continuing to follow No Child Left Behind. In that situation, it eliminated some language and you'll see a lot of language eliminated in here, but it also required us to develop or to put forth a separate policy on Title I parental, parental involvement. We're not bringing that particular policy forward tonight because we wanted to collaborate with CNI to make sure they're really the, the big gurus and they have the knowledge base on Title I. And so we haven't that one, but this one, we're ready to go with. This basically eliminates the, some of the language and changes some language on PEPs. It takes out the whole section on Title I. It again takes out on page four of nine, a whole nother section on Title N, one, another section on page five of nine and basically puts, puts in a section on equal access to two schools on page six of nine. And it, and it has one more section on parents' knowledge that they have the opportunity to, to know these things or to know that they have the right to opt out, which is really just a rewording of some things that we already have. Does anybody have any questions on this particular policy, 1310? Okay. Moving forward to the next one, we have school safety, 1510, 4,272, 70. Basically, this policy talks about the responsibility of staff members to supervise students and to address behavior issues. Something that's new under this is it delineates the point at which the staff member no longer has to spend their time intervening between two folks who are fighting and it, when it becomes more prudent for that staff member to hold back the crowd and make sure that more people don't get involved in the altercation, which I think should be a relief for staff members that they can make that decision. One suggestion was, and I've talked with Mark about it, we're going to add to the cross references, the prohibition against retaliation. We think that that policy needs to be referenced so that staff members don't feel like if they report something that somebody's going to come back and punish them for that reporting. Are there any questions on that one?
Mr. Harrison?
I'm sorry, when a altercation does happen and in the counseling of the, the parties involved, when that occurs, are the parties apprised of the policies such as you mentioned, retaliation? In, in counseling students who got into a fight, is it made clear to them what steps need to occur or not occur thereafter?
I hope I'm going to answer your question, not ask me again, okay?
But I'm asking per policy.
Right.
Kid A and B got into a fight.
Right.
You set them down, they're a little bit calmer. With them or with their, their parents, is it made explicitly clear that according to policy, there better not be any retaliation or any follow-up incident between these two students?
I.
Per policy?
Per policy, I would say they probably don't say according to policy, da, 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 this is what needs to happen, but they will, the principals and assistant principals are very clear about the fact that this needs to be the end of this, done. It needs to be the end of it. Their first primary responsibility is the safety, making sure that the altercation is stopped and then looking at consequences and making sure that appropriate consequences, including counseling, go along with it if that need be. And, and then I, I would assure you that principals and assistant principals make it very clear that no retaliation needs to happen. But they don't, they probably, and I can, I can say with, with good confidence that they don't quote the policy out and they don't pull the policy out. They might pull the code of conduct out and say, this is the code of conduct, remember you signed this. You've just violated the code of conduct.
Okay, yeah, I guess what I was asking was a leg to stand on that, that principals and staff dealing with the situation would have a leg to stand on in terms of asserting to this, the parties involved, cease and desist and quit this, quit this mess and, and not carry on.
Oh, absolutely.
So the student conduct policy is better.
Right.
Helps my understanding than this policy. Gotcha, gotcha.
That's a better vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Any further questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. Why do we have three policy codes on, on this? Is it repeated three times in three different sections?
Each section refers to a different topic and actually, Mark can probably speak to this better, but there's a, a theme. One is school board governance, one is students, one is employees, and that's the employee section.
Yeah.
So the policy is repeated in all three sections.
Right. That's what it, it, when we went to policies to lead the school manual, all the student policies of the 4,000 series. But the reason, and I know sometimes it's confusing to get these long numbers, why is it cross-referenced? We wanted to have everything that a student would need to review though in the student section. section, so you don't have to worry about going somewhere else. So that's why it has a 4,000 number. But obviously, we have employee responsibilities, too. So it has a 7,000 number, and because it's talking about a overall operation, it has a 1,000 number. So several policies do, if they really belong in multiple sections, rather than try to do a lot of cross-referencing, we just give those numbers. So you can give someone a portion of the index that relates to students, and you'd have all the 4,000s, including this one in that section.
And I apologize. As I vaguely recall, the state passed some kind of law that protected staff and teachers from liability, or it was in the last legislative session. Am I mistaken? And is that germane at all to this, or was it part of the consideration of our changes in this policy? Maybe I'm completely off-base.
I think, though, well, the one that got the most attention in the last session was a law criminalizing certain attacks on teachers, including virtual attacks. I don't know if that's, I think, the policy that was done. I see, Kathy, you've got something to add on that.
I'm sorry to bring in apples and oranges.
No, you're right. They do now have liability insurance that the Department of Public Instruction furnishes. And I know this year, we were required to send out an email at the beginning of the year to all employees to inform them about that liability insurance and where they can go to get information on it.
Okay, Mr. Harrison, you clear? Okay. Anybody else? Any more questions on this policy? Okay, Dr. Sane.
School Calendar and Time for Learning is Policy 3300. This policy, the changes represent two things. Number one, it defines more clearly what an instructional day is, and it goes back to follow the law, the changes in the law on 185 school days or 1,025 hours, which I can assure you that our folks fall within. Any questions on that?
I have a couple of questions, but I needed to get to it. It probably gets into the thing that we were just talking about, about cap versus flexible, and I just didn't understand what the...
There's some language on page three or four that talks about administrative and flexible workdays. Is that what you were talking about?
Right. I just wanted to get a little more background so I can understand what a flexible day is versus...
A flexible day is a day that a teacher would have the right to use an annual leave day. This past year, we had five cap days, which we got as a result of a waiver we applied for. Those cap days could not be used as an annual leave day. They had to have staff development on them. This coming year, the General Assembly heard from lots and lots of teachers that said, oh, my goodness, we can't take any of our annual leave days off. And so this time, they're going to request that we select two annual leave days that are definitely flexible, but there are other flexible annual leave days in there that teachers with annual leave can choose to take off or can use to, or they can come in and work, either way. Can I answer your question? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Sane.
Okay. Students at Risk of Academic Failure. It is the law in North Carolina that students who are, students be identified within the first nine weeks of school or the first nine weeks of instruction. If this child doesn't start until October, the teacher has nine weeks to make a determination as to whether or not the child needs assistance or not. The teacher then creates a personal education plan, which you will hear as PEP. They work with it, they make it available. And this is really what we tell teachers, is the teacher's guarantee that you have thought out and you have created strategies to help this child so that when this youngster grows up and writes a book that Johnny can't read and my teacher didn't help me, we know that that's not true. We know that the teacher set out specific strategies and shared those with the parent and made sure that the parent understood. There's, I think, also a part where the parent can list some things that they're doing on this particular plan, and lots of schools have implemented that. The second part of this is transition plans. We've been doing this for years in which we help students transition from elementary to middle school because we know that's a big change, and we know that lots of fifth graders are worried about being stuffed in a locker, but many more of them are worried about whether they can even unlock a locker or whether or not they can even find the locker. And from middle school to high school, for the very same worries they have all over again. And so the state has come up with transition plans, but we've been doing that for at least five years that I know of. Are there any questions about students at risk of academic failure?
I do, I do have a question. So under the personal education plans, there's new language in there that makes it sound like, for the first time, we're going to be doing these PEPs for children that are in the kindergarten through third grade, because right now it just says no later than fourth.
Right.
So is that a new change?
No, we've been doing them in kindergarten, but what it's saying is, it's saying that no later than fourth grade, teachers and educators have a responsibility to this child to identify if this child is going to have difficulty. Lots of times, children will sail through kindergarten, they'll sail through first grade, but when you start getting into third grade in real school and reading to learn instead of learning to read, they begin to have difficulty. So this child may not have needed a PEP in kindergarten, first or second grade, but no later than fourth grade, it is our responsibility to have identified whether this child needed support services.
Okay, but I guess what's going to be is it says, and this is new language.
Right.
No later than fourth grade for the 2012-2013 school year and kindergarten thereafter, which means starting next year.
In kindergarten.
We're going from kindergarten to third grade.
You're exactly right.
Are we adding new tasks to teachers without giving them additional resources such as time or assistance?
We are, in my opinion, we have been writing PEPs for kindergartners ever since they came out. This is the first time it's been in the language of the law. Okay? Now, having said that, this is another good argument as to why we need to take a look at offering our kindergarten, first, second, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade teachers a guaranteed planning time that is commensurate with what middle school and high school have. And so I think, again, this is another impetus that we need to move forward, and in budget time, we'll have some ideas on that. Okay?
I'd also, again, be interested from a point of view from our teacher on the board.
So like specifically, what do you admit?
So I want to, so is it standard practice now, K through third grade, after nine weeks, there's a personal education plan written for any student that's been determined to be below standards?
Right.
Or I guess it's at risk of failing.
Just naturally, as teachers, we're always looking for the kid that is struggling, so we do everything we can for, as an RTI school. So it's just an automatic, the schools that aren't, before we became an RTI school, we had the PEPs, and we went through all the process. It's just a natural part of what we do every day.
You may want to, does a new board member know what RTI is?
Oh.
I'm sorry, just for, could you, either one of you can explain the RTI.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
RTI is Response to Intervention. So basically, what we do is we have a school-wide assessment that we give three times each year, and that allows us to just, we see all of the children in the school, and we're able to just track where they are. And it's really nice because it basically puts all that data together, and we're able to see which kids really need the interventions. And from there, we can create the PEPs, or we can put them on a tier, and there's a lot involved with that, but it puts them on different tiers that allows us to see which kids need the intervention. So it's very helpful for us. It's very helpful information.
And the tiers define the level of intervention. For example, tier one kids really don't need any intervention, they're just in the classroom. Tier two needs some minor support, and by the time you get up to the top tier, you need special education. So it just defines those levels of intervention that we provide for students.
And these assessments that you said you were doing three times a year, they are done at kindergarten all the way up?
Mm-hmm. We just finished ours last week for the winter.
You would be amazed at how those assessments change the conversation between teachers and parents, because it gives teachers very concrete information to share with parents. It's a whole different conversation between a teacher and a parent when they can look at and say, you know, your child really can only name this many letters. I need you to work on helping your child learn to name these letters, and here's a game you can take home and play with your child. And if you play this, when you get tired of that game, I've got two more games for you, and we'll just trade out games until your child really gets this. And so it provides that kind of detail. The other thing it provides that we've never had before is data on whether or not our strategies worked. Concrete data on did the strategy work, and how long do you keep going, which is very interesting. That's a whole report topic for another day that we'd love to share with you. It's an incredible opportunity, and I've got stories, but I'm not going to tell those tonight. Okay?
So, Ms. Chairman, put that on the list for a future topic.
Okay.
We spent a lot of time earlier tonight discussing the McKinney-Vento law as well as the consolidated report. So is this policy germane to those at all, even as a cross-reference, or is this policy largely focused on the intervention itself, the personal education plan itself?
Yeah, the cross-reference would be of value in that these McKinney-Vento children are entitled to the same kinds of interventions as any other child.
And again, I don't mean to bring in unrelated matters, but is there any value to such cross-reference?
I prefer to...
If it's ungermane, that's fine, too. I'm just, I'm hearing things that, to me, sound related.
Like they could be related. I can't imagine a teacher that would differentiate between a McKinney-Vento child and not a McKinney-Vento child. We've got McKinney-Vento children who are straight A students, and we've got McKinney-Vento children who really struggle just in how to do school. So. School Improvement Plan. There are changes in terminology here. We used to have levels of school improvement. We now have a designation called focus schools. And focus schools are those schools where the difference between the majority group and a minority subgroup are greater than 38.7%, and that's a real simplistic explanation of that. It used to be based just on your level of performance on proficiency, but now, taking a look at your whole school and wanting to make sure that your school improvement plan is used to decrease that achievement gap between one group of students and another group of students. Are there any questions about school improvement? Okay. And moving on to the next one. Children of Military Families. There's just an updated legal reference and a sentence or two at the beginning recognizing that children of military families, particularly those children whose parents or custodians, guardians have been deployed, have some very unusual circumstances, and we need to be sensitive to those children. Okay? Any questions about that? Yes, sir?
I have one. Does it make any sense at all, and this is a whole nother topic, but it's, we do use the term deployed there, but there is PTSD when they return. Do we need to make that designation, or does that kind of go with the territory, I guess, even though we don't specifically use the term?
I think we recognize that children of military families move, even families that are not deployed, move every two to three years anyway, and that causes a hardship for some children. And for us to be sensitive to that, that as a member of a military family, you undergo some special difficulties that might cause you to have some, it's after nine, I'm not thinking very well tonight, that may cause some roadblocks for you in achieving your education. And so we don't, we as educational beings don't need to add any more roadblocks to what you do. So if you were in an IB school, we put you in an IB school. If you were in a STEM school, we put you in a STEM school, and you jump way ahead of the waitlist, you move. If you had an AP class, we put you in the AP class. We don't quibble about that. We just take care of you. And that's what this policy is designed to ensure. This next one is actually 4151. You'll see that it used to be 4152, and it used to have a name called School Improvement Unsafe School Choice Transfer. And the changes in here are in relation to changes in Title I, also the change in the title of the annual report. In addition to that, it is a more specific definition of, which interestingly enough is very similar, it's just worded in a different way to what a persistently dangerous school is. And I will tell you right now, we do not have any persistently dangerous schools in Cabarrus County. Yes, ma'am?
Do we have to use that? I don't like that name.
Well, I don't either.
Could we do School Attendance Choice Transfer, or do we have to name it that?
Unsafe School Choice Transfer? Oh, that's...
School Attendance Choice Transfer? I mean...
Well, we don't want to confuse it with what used to be Title I, where we did give students a choice of two schools.
I just don't like that name, though. Unsafe School Choice Transfer. I don't like that name. That's just so negative.
Well, that, synonyms would be dangerous school. Do you like that?
I don't like that.
Okay. I'm open to suggesting that.
I am, too. Well, how about environment?
How about potentially unsafe school?
Well...
I like that better than...
I'm okay with it as well. I'm trying to help out Ms. Carpenter.
I know, they just...
Move this thing along a little.
Anyway.
Yeah.
I suppose if we have to do it, but I just don't, just don't like that at all. But if we have to do it, we have to do it.
It's a shame, Carolyn, that in this day and age, we have to have a policy about unsafe schools. That's a shame, and I agree with you about that. We do not have any unsafe schools or persistently dangerous schools in Cabarrus County, but the policy is there just in case. Okay? And it does protect folks from, in case of cyberbullying, if, for example, you're in my class and you decide to use cyberbullying to get back at me because you didn't get the grade you wanted on his test, then I can have you, and you could go to a different teacher's class. I would not be required to keep you in my classroom and continue on it. So there's some safeguards in there. And we do have a little bit of cyberbullying that goes on from time to time. Okay? Yes, sir?
So these are the criteria that you designate a school as a...
Barry, can you key up, please?
I'm sorry.
And Ms. Carpenter, do you want to key?
Thank you. This is the criteria in here that you would deem a school as a persistently dangerous school?
Not me. That's the state of North Carolina that's made that decision.
So the school would have that specific label?
Would have that label, yes.
Then you should just change it to persistently dangerous school.
Persistent?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it's called. Rather than unsafe school choice transfer, call it what it is, because that's what the label will be. I'll take your hold. Certainly, if you look at Section 4, it does also, individual students that are victims of violent offenses, even at a non-p persistently dangerous school, have a right to go to a different school.
That's true.
If it turns out they're a victim, and that's, I think, that'd be my reluctance. If you have a very narrow title, students may not be aware of the application. I agree, I'm not wild about the title either. I've been racking my brain over a better, better title of the policy, but I think, but I think if it's not, it does go beyond just persistently dangerous schools in terms of some of the coverage.
Maybe safety-related school transfer?
We could do that.
I think I like that.
You like that better?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Got it for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other questions on that? All right. And it probably actually addresses the whole topic better than unsafe school. Okay. Assaults, Threats, and Harassments. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. Well, consider it changed. All right. Assaults, Threats, and Harassments, 4331. This is to update it for the cyberbullying and to make sure that we understand that that's a serious activity and it is synonymous with harassment and bullying. Any questions about that? Student Records is the next one. And if you go to the very last page of that, the only change in this policy is to put in the longitudinal data system that the state of North Carolina is putting in, which is the only difference. Moving on to 6220, Operation of Student Food Services. They changed the law. They do not have to have contracts for sale of juice or bottled water in a competitive separate, in a separate competitive bid. They can bid them together. And so that's the change in that one. Okay?
There was also a change in, I think, Number 11. All income from the sale of food and beverages...
Right, right. Is required to be deposited in that account. In other words, as the principal, I can't go in and say, you know, your sale of cake over here, I'm going to take that and put that in my general account, which we wouldn't do anyway because Kelly would kill us. Okay? So, but right.
She can't do that if they arrest her.
Okay. I'm sure she would find a way to help me understand that that was not the right thing to do, without a doubt.
In that paragraph a little, it looks like there's still a footnote five. I just noticed.
Oh, thank you. I'll take that out. Got it. Contracts of the Board, 6420. Authorization to enter into contracts. The language is changed here to say that this is approved unless it is prohibited by statute or regulation. Okay? So it gives the parameters under which the superintendent and the principals may enter into contracts, but it adds that language at the end about you can do that only if it's not illegal. Okay?
And I should just add that those are not, those amounts are not set by statute. In other words, we discussed at the Policy Committee what we've done in practice and what we're comfortable with. But if the board wanted to pick higher or lower amounts, that is something that is not, you're not mandated to do that. So, I'm comfortable with those amounts. But I just want you to, a lot of these changes we've looked at are essentially mandatory changes.
My chief financial consultant tells me that those numbers are okay.
Right. Kelly, Kelly's happy on them, but I just wanted to let you know that those are not set by statute. That's something set by policy.
Okay. Last but not least, if, not quite, all right, almost last but not least, 7510. This is leave. It just deletes petty leave. Petty leave actually is something that we do not use anymore, and for some reason, it did not get deleted from policy.
You skipped over the health certificate.
I'm so sorry.
Seventy-one twenty?
Yeah, seventy-one twenty. This particular one requires that, and it's been a requirement and it's part of the law. We really were concerned on how to word some of this. So basically, what you have is verbatim from the law. An employee who has been absent for more than forty successive school days because of a communicable disease, they must have a health certificate when they come back. And it defines who can give them that health certificate. Also, new employees must have a health certificate when they come to work for us to show that they do not have tuberculosis or some other major communicable disease. This does not talk about colds.
How often is this renewed? I mean, is it, is the forty-day absence the only criteria?
Right, right. So...
So an employee doesn't have to get a new health certificate every year or over the summer, or every August, or something to that effect?
A hundred years ago, when I started teaching, we got a TB test every single year. We do not have to do that anymore thanks to this, a policy like this. We just get tested one time, they know we don't have TB, and we're good to go.
And why forty days? I mean, of all the communicable diseases out there, what makes forty days a magic number? Okay, never mind. I mean...
What? Okay.
I'm wondering if it's in the statute.
I mean, why not forty-two and a half? I mean, why not thirty?
I think it's in the law.
I think it's in the law.
I mean, there must be some medical reason, I guess, that that's...
It's in the statute. I'm sorry. It is, yeah, it's in the statute. 115(c)(323) specifically.
It sounds like Leviticus to me.
Yeah.
So, the short answer is, once upon a time, the legislature decided that was a good amount of time to, hey, they must really be sick if they're up forty days.
Right. They probably consulted a physician advocate who came forth and said, okay? Now, to...
We can't change that. That's one that we can't change. We are stuck with the forty days.
I've got a quick question, but Rob was getting ready to key up.
Okay.
That talks about mental disease. What are we talking about there?
The law does not define what mental disease is, except at that point.
It just seems different than communicable disease.
Again, the law doesn't define that.
It's after nine. I'm like you. My brain has quit functioning. So, the...
It's past my bedtime.
The certificate must be prepared by, is that, is there, it's a physician, and then you drop down to the either-or? There's no or beside physicians, which makes it mean, to me, you have to have it from the physician. But I just, I guess I don't understand what the or is doing.
I read it as a physician or a nurse practitioner approved pursuant to the law, or a physician's assistant licensed to practice. Mark is how, is that how you read it?
That's not really the way I read that.
I do read, I read it the same way, but if Blake's confused, if it's confusing, we can add an or.
We can add an or there.
Let's add an or after the first one.
Okay.
I do typically, if you've got a chain, you would look at the last conjunctive. It would be a construction rule, but if it's confusing to anybody...
At nine in the morning, I'd probably look at it that way.
We should add, we should add an or for an abundance. I think it's one of the three. It wouldn't make sense to just, you know, if you had a physician, obviously, you don't also need, but let's put an or there for clarity.
We don't want to miss an opportunity to be clear here.
Right.
Okay.
As far as a mental disease is concerned, I don't know that a psychologist versus a psychiatrist could write such a note, but it's, it's, it's getting complicated. The intent is, I guess, clear.
Right, right.
I mean, I think if you had, if you had someone applying to be a teacher that had some mental impairment, a degenerative brain disease or something else, and obviously, where the line is between physical and mental, but you could see a physician saying, this person can't teach. You know, this person has no memory, no cognitive memory. Now, is that a mental disease? But if you had no memory, obviously, it'd be difficult for you to be a teacher in our system. So you could have a physician say, this person has impaired memory. They have no long-term memory, and therefore, I don't believe that they're fit to teach. So you could, you could come up with circumstances where, based on a mental disability, they could not get the certificate saying that they're, they have an ability to teach.
Healthy enough to take on the responsibilities of that particular job, what that job entails. All right. I apologize for rushing you through. Seventy-five ten is, we are finally to leave. And as I've mentioned before, this deletes the whole paragraph on petty leave, which Human Resources has not used for a while, and we just had not updated our policy on Any questions? Last but not least, 2110. This is Board Member Elections. What we changed here, and I'll take this back. This was a request of the School Board that we go back and align this. It was incorrect and did not align with the State Board of Elections nor Cabarrus County Board of Elections. And what we've done is gone back and aligned this law with State County, I mean, County Board of Elections and State Board of Elections.
Okay, Board Members. We've gone through all of these. Dr. Sane did an excellent job going through them. It's quite a few. All these are on the first reading. And with the exceptions, well, I guess we can do a consented item on all of these with the changes in 4152, where the title would be changed, unsafe. Title changed there. And then on Policy 7120, we added the word or.
Right.
Where we're talking about the distinction between the physician and the nurse practitioner and all that. So with those changes, are we okay to go to the consent agenda on the first reading of these policies? On the eleventh? Okay? Everybody good? All right. So that's what we'll move to. Thank you, Dr. Sane. All right, Board Members, we're down to the last item here, 4.7. This is the resolution that we need to talk about just for a few minutes. I asked Ms. Monroe to give you a copy of the legislative alert that I had received on January the 30th, Urgent Action Needed School Property Ownership. And what this here is, you know, I think you've probably had a chance to read over it, and we've been asked by the North Carolina School Board Association to support a resolution that they have recommended. And so you have this in front of you, and without me going into a lot of detail, I don't want to be redundant from what you already have here, but we would like to discuss this for a few minutes and see where everybody's at on it. I support it because I feel like that, you know, we're, the School Board is statutorily mandated to site schools, build schools, and maintain schools and all of that. And I can see where there might be a lot of issues if commissioners are allowed to take over and own the property and take care of the maintenance and take care of the siding and all of that. And that leaves the Board of Education out. And I don't, I don't think that's a good way to move, in my own opinion. But there's six more of you here, and you will have time to express your opinions. And so let's do that. And we'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side. And if you have comments or questions about this resolution, then we'll do that, and then we'll decide what we're going to do and get this resolution signed if you so approve it, and get it sent to the commissioners to let them know where we stand on this. Okay? Mr. Schumaker, it's your turn.
All right. Well, I support this resolution as written because, and my main reason for supporting it is that you truly do divide the power of this board, and this board can only be functioning as an overseer of staff and not the whole global aspect of education. So allocating facilities and making sure we have the proper facilities to educate our children isn't going to be a part of our purview if they strip this away from us. And so therefore, we won't have that total, that control of the education portion that we were elected to support. And so I believe it subverts our ability to carry out the duties that we've been, we were sworn to do.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. And I wanted to also, I might have rushed through that just a little bit. On this legislative alert, I wanted to make sure that all of you and the listening and viewing audience also knows this is not something that our Cabarrus County Commissioners have asked, this is not something that they've asked us to give them. This here is from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the NCACC. They've adopted this as part of their 2013-14 legislative agenda to support providing counties with the option to acquire, own, and construct public school sites and facilities. And so this is not something that our county has asked us to do. It's a statewide legislative agenda. Carolyn, you have something you want to say?
As Barry mentioned, this is, this is a function that our board, school boards are supposed to do. And basically, we go to the county commissioners' desk for funding, which is their job. And basically, we know what we need in a school building. This is what we do well. And so it is a joint effort. So I would support this resolution because this is what our job is, and this is what we're elected to do. And this is what our function is. And this is, this would be like us going over and trying to take part of the commissioner's job. So we keep our job, they keep their job, and we are all happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. That's well put. Mr. Keiger?
I concur with Mr. Schumaker and Ms. Carpenter.
Okay. Mr. Walter?
A little bit different take on it. I mean, this is, this is an agenda, a plank of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, not our county commissioners. We haven't necessarily discussed this with them at the time. Obviously, the concept I support, I don't know if a resolution is going to make much of a difference, but I think maybe working with our legislative legislators and talking to them first might be something to pursue first before coming up with a resolution in this case.
Well, keep in mind, Mr. Walter, that this is a recommendation from the North Carolina School Board Association. It didn't just come to Cabarrus County schools. It, of course, went to all the LEAs in North Carolina because it's been sponsored by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So we're not picking on our county by no means, and we haven't talked with them. I'm not even sure they've even received this. So I don't, I don't know, but, because I just got it myself on January 30th. But Dr. Shepherd, you want to make a comment or two in reference to this because you're more on a little higher level on this?
Well, I would assume that if it's on the North Carolina County Commissioner's legislative plank, that a majority of the members of that association would have to be in agreement with it. I don't know where ours fall on that. We haven't discussed it with them. But I can certainly say to you that if I'm working with two different boards to accomplish the same goal, it would certainly make our work more difficult. I agree with Ms. Carpenter. Let's just be clear on whose roles are what. And if this helps, if it helps our association or your association lobby for what we believe is right, then I don't see there's any harm in passing the resolution. Especially understanding that we don't know what the position of our county commissioners is. And if, if they are opposed to it, I assume that they might be being asked to take a position at some point. So I'm comfortable with passing the resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. I don't know where they would stand either, you know, but I can say that they have worked very well with us over the years. And I think back of all the schools that they've constructed since I've been on the board, and even though through tough times, our school system has grown, and there's going to be needs for more schools, and I'm not sure that's a burden they won't start with, you know, because they've got their plate full already. But they'll, they'll, they'll come a time, as Dr. Shepherd said, that they'll have to decide whether they're going to support this particular legislative agenda item, or whether they say, no, you guys keep it, we'll keep our job, and you keep yours, that kind of thing. But with that being said, we'll move on to Mr. Harrison. So, Mr. Harrison, you can give us your take on this.
I can't for the life of me fathom why any county would want to assume ownership or control, but maybe those are scenarios that I'll, you know, encounter at some time or another. Also, just please, going forward, if we can designate any of these resolutions as having stemmed from or having, what the source of these resolutions are, that would give me a better context for how to think about these resolutions. If they come from the State School Board Association, that's fine. But as the pattern so far has been, it seems that here's a resolution, and I don't necessarily comprehend the bigger picture. The resolutions probably don't seem effective just if we pass it, but they're effective in the aggregate of all of the LEAs or some portion or majority of the LEAs in the, in the state. And that's the reason I would ask in the future if resolutions can be designated as having come from a certain source.
Well, actually, David, it did. It came from the North Carolina School Board Association. This resolution was prepared for us and the other 114 LEAs throughout North Carolina.
And I, I mean, in terms of...
So we didn't just make this up.
I understand that. But I mean, in terms of its presentation to us, from the original receipt of this resolution, I wouldn't have instantly known that it came from the State School Board Association.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Are you guys getting email from the NCSBA?
They're getting it.
Mine comes through the Barracuda spam thing.
We may need to give them some...
Try.
Okay. I just, I mean, because that, you know, you'll get all you want to know what's happening with NCSBAs. I mean, it didn't come from, you know, Lynn or here. Okay.
Yeah, and this...
That now, certainly.
Yeah, well, it sounded like you got an email spam problem or something like, you know, but, you know, you got to remember... you know, but it, you know, you got to remember, you know, we pay thousands of dollars annually to be a member of the North Carolina School Board Association, and they are our lobbying agent, and they're the ones that are on the forefront of what's going on in Raleigh, what's going on in the country, and when there's anything that is adversarial or detrimental to Cabarrus County schools or schools in general, then they're, they're Johnny on the spot, they're on top of it to protect our interest.
And I understand that there is a, you know, certain format and flow of a resolution and how that should be structured and everything, but if, if there could be something that says on the recommendation of the North Carolina School Board Association, I don't think that that would change the resolution.
And that's what this is, but I think if you get your emails, if you get your emails straightened out, I think you'll see that's where it come from, David. Okay? Mr. Phillips, you have anything you want to add?
Well, I, I mean, I'd rather be an owner than a renter, and I know that I take a lot better care of the cars and the homes that I own than the ones that I've rented. So I think that it would be in everybody's interest for the, the people that occupy the school buildings to be responsible for owning and maintaining them. I also wonder if there isn't something else behind this that is kind of a Trojan horse to help charter schools, and that it's really meant, because it says public schools, doesn't say LEAs, it says public schools, and charter schools are public school, and I think this may be a Trojan horse to get charter schools under the care and the, and the feeding of the county commissioners.
Mr. Phillips, that's a good comment, and it very well, very well could be, you know, the, the part of the motive behind it. But anyway, board members, we've had a chance to discuss this, and we need to decide if we're going to support it or if we're, we're going to oppose it. But what's your pleasure for the eleventh? You won't consent or want to action?
Move to adopt. Move to accept.
Well, I think Mr. Walters, did you want to bring it to the action agenda, Mr. Walters? Bring it to the action vote?
I'm probably supportive of it, but-
Yeah, well, between now and then, you can be thinking about it, and, you know, we'll just go ahead and put it on the action agenda for the next Monday, and Ms. Monroe, you've got record of that. All right, board members, looks like we're all finished up here, and so I guess until February the eleventh, we'll say goodnight, and so what I need at this point is a motion that we adjourn.
Stand by.
Got a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, goodnight, folks. We'll see you back on the eleventh.